Call this for the car.
Yeah. I can't find it. Right through, I can't where it is. I think they're in the front end. Wait, I don't see here.
I hear you say.
Yeah, they both are drawn.
Yeah, but here it is.
It is nine o'clock and you'll rise for information and plan salute. We'll call this meeting with order. Join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning, we are grateful and thankful for all the blessings you've given us. Lord, our hearts are heavy for those who have lost their lives and those families struggling with the loss of loved ones in Texas and any other tragedy that we're not aware of. Lord, I pray for your comfort and peace for them. Lord, I pray that we would be helping hands, willing to do what we can to help out. Lord, as we meet here this morning, I pray that we make decisions based upon the testament of the constituents that we serve and your will. Thank you for your Son Jesus and his death on the cross and his resurrection, that we may to rise to meet him in the air at the end of our lives. In Jesus's name, amen.
Join me in the prayer. I pray to the regions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, we have two sets of minutes, one for June twenty seventh and one for July first.
Make the motion to approve June twenty seventh?
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of June twenty seventh. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes.
Make a motion to approve minutes on Ju- July first.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the July first meeting minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item number four, is there any miscellaneous items from the audience?
Hi, I'm Daniel Bates, I'm with Southwest, they're still walking around fifteen twenty miles. And I just wanted to know if you had been spoken to by the people in Cushing regarding point they went through in the process of the wood nail blades being set up for dismantling. Did anyone speak about after they were dismantled, they would be stripped down, ground up, and shipped to Tulsa to a special incinerator? Did anyone ever hear that?
I have not. I have not.
Um, the second thing, um... I wanted to know about your trucks in the county. Can you haul gravel and sand? Are you required by law to cover them with something so the sand and gravel doesn't blow on the driver behind?
When we're hauling materials that's supposed to be tarred.
Okay, and that's true, even for gravel trucks that haul for any county.
Any truck on the road?
Any truck on the road, okay. So, I just wanted to make you aware that these wood nail blades that are coming to Payne County in the southwest part of I thirty five are not covered. And material is going off of those trucks, the fiberglass material onto the county and onto the state highways. And material this last week flew into a woman's windshield off of those wood nail blades. She didn't, she's an older lady, she didn't know what to do, but I understand it's possibly, it's been reported to Highway Patrol. But those trucks are not covered. And I just want you to make sure I thought that was a big one, I'm not sure. Some particles have, or pieces have fell on the highway and like yesterday my pastor told me, you know, he found one. He found one on the side of it. I don't know where at, we haven't taken a picture of it or anything, but anyway, that's yet to be done. And then also, um... Maybe that's it. I don't know, you got our pieces.
Thanks for bringing your concerns to our attention. If there is some concerns like that, you'd have to get ahold of law enforcement, Highway Patrol.
They have instructions to do that, I'm careful with them, they may have already been reported, but that's something that the people in the county and county students coming on I thirty five need to be aware of, applying material.
Any other miscellaneous items from the audience? All right, here and then, we will move on. Item number five, discussion possible action on evaluations, bid number twenty twenty six dash nineteen, janitorial services for the courthouse. Are you prepared to evaluate?
I am. After evaluation and calling references and actually going to physical buildings and meeting with each of the references, walking around, I have a discussion, come up with a, with a acceptance letter. So for bid two oh two six dash nineteen for general services to be awarded to CNC paint company? I recommend, recommend. And then for bid two oh two six dash twenty for janitorial services for paint county administration building, I recommend services be awarded to CNC commercial cleaning as well.
All right, so you're selecting those as lowest bid, bid, your most active motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept CNC cleaning for both bid number twenty twenty six dash nineteen and twenty twenty six dash twenty. Any other discussion? All in favor? Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item six eighty, discussion possible action contract for annual fire extinguisher service between Frontier Protection and Board of County Commissioners. I believe this is just an annual fire protection agreement contract for this fiscal year.
That is correct. Make a motion to approve annual fire extinguisher service between Frontier Fire Protection and Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the contract as presented, any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item B, discussion possible action road name request, Golden Creek Trail. African's name is Heather Hancock, and this is two hundred west one hundred twenty eighth and Perkins. It has come recommended for approval by the assessor's office. The check is in the safe. And if, if this is in your area and there is, it's not identified the actual road, so if you'd like to table this, it could be placed on our next agenda.
Yeah, I would like to table it, so I can see where it's gonna be.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so your motion has been made and seconded to table the road name request. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item C, discussion possible action county treasurer's resale tax deed. Evolved?
This is the second property that didn't sell in resale, we've been trying to do some research. It's about a hundred and fifty feet square with a well in the middle of it, out there at Oak Creek, that services four houses for the service, even though the deed was under one of them and it's passed away now. I have to, just wanted to let you know, I have consulted Max Myers about possible, anything, you know, responsibility for the county having that, and he just advised me to go ahead and do the deed. I think one of the other houses really wants to come make a bid on it.
Yeah, one of those touchy situations there.
It's in the end of a road, and literally it's just like a hundred feet, maybe a hundred and fifty feet, the description for it is.
Yeah.
And it's a cement block well. So...
All right.
That's the delay on why it's just now hitting your desk, I'm trying to...
Getting rigged all the time.
Trying.
And this is essentially placing this piece of property in the name of the county commissioners as it did not sell resale.
So how does that work if somebody might want to come and bid, do we need to take it? How does, or do we table it, how does this, this explain to me?
Well, this, this puts it in the name of the county. And then generally the county can erase all of the municipal liens or county liens, not federal. And then generally people will be interested at that point to purchase it legally, but if somebody's interested in purchasing it, they will reach out to the treasurer's office, the treasurer will get board approval to put it up for auction, county commissioner.
I didn't know if that would need to be done before that, so this isn't, obviously, okay, perfect, love it.
And then they will advertise that option, and whoever's wanting to bid on the property will arrive at wherever they designate the location to be.
Great.
And set up. Do I entertain a motion to approve the county treasurer's resale deed?
Second.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the county treasurer's resale deed placing this piece of property in the name of Board of County Commissioners. Any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item C, any ingress egress agreements?
I have two, one is for Robert Meeby Williams for Stagner Road between McCallum and Lakeview, and the other one is for Terry and Sheila Tharp, also on Stagner between McCallum and Lakeview. Make a motion to accept these.
For road building and clearing conditions. Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve those presented, I've got one as well, but we can go ahead and vote on those. All in favor of approving the two, there's these two here? Ingress egress agreements for District Three? Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. I have one with Meagre Development, it's out here by Prairie Road, we're gonna stockpile some rocks, we can shoulder it, and we can haul more rock with our Bailey dumps and dump it there, and then we'll load it into our flat top trucks to shoulder all these roads up with a shouldering machine instead of dumping it on the road and blading it off like we used to. And so that's what that one is for, so we can stockpile rock on that property there by the country seat.
Make a motion to make so.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve ingress egress agreement for District One as stated. All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Appointment of requisitioning and receiving officers.
The court clerk has no changes for all of their accounts for the new fiscal year.
Do I entertain a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the requisitioning and receiving officers presented by the court clerk's office, any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Any updates on our Payne County radio system?
Everything's moving along.
Get the gravel placed at the GRDA building today.
Totally, yeah.
We get rain in some rain.
I was gonna say, it stops raining.
All right, item G, catch appropriations.
I have none.
H, discussion possible action fire department pre-requisitions, I do have one here. It is from the Ingalls Fire Department to Fluent IMS, it's a thirty member annual subscription for five hundred dollars.
Make a motion to approve with Jim's mind be up with this.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the pre-requisition as presented, authorizing chairman to sign on behalf. All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Item I, purchase orders.
Purchase orders to be paid today for fiscal year twenty four twenty five are two hundred and twenty four thousand seventeen dollars and seventy nine cents. For fiscal year twenty five twenty six, seven hundred and twenty one thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and sixteen cents. And then I have some payroll. Payroll taxes are one hundred and seventy seven dollars and sixty one cents. Payroll is nine hundred and one dollar for a grand total of one thousand seventy eight dollars and sixty one cents.
Make a motion to approve purchase orders as upon signature of chairman. Now we don't want to do that one that way.
Oh, sorry.
Proven upon signature, sorry, I'm wrong.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve purchase orders upon signature, any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Any monthly reports of officers?
Yes. I have various reports from the treasurer for the month of June. And I, the court clerk records management and preservation has a indie balance of eighty seven thousand one hundred and twenty four dollars and twenty four cents. These are all at the end of June review. In the court clerk's official depository, court fund and revolving fund, there is a balance of one million one hundred and eighty three thousand three hundred twenty three dollars and thirty one cents. For the assessor's office, they have a balance of four hundred. For the county clerk, they have a balance of one, one hundred and seventy two thousand eight hundred and seventy six dollars and two cents. That's all I have.
Make a motion to acknowledge.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to acknowledge the reports as presented, any other discussion? All in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Any public announcements from the board? Here and then, do we have any road crossings?
No.
I have four here. One is from Plains Marketing for a crude oil sixteen inch steel transmission line over in Cushing. And the other three are from Mid America Pipeline for twenty inch steel crude oil line over around Cushing. I would entertain a motion to approve the road crossings as presented, D one dash point five dash four, five, six, and seven.
Second.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve road crossings, all in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes. Any new business? Here and then, we will begin signing our paperwork. I'd like to go back to industrial access, I didn't realize I had some on the back of these, I've got... Six industrial access points, and they are all from Mid America Pipeline in association with their road crossings. Do I entertain a motion to approve the industrial access permits?
Motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and these are temporary. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the temporary access permits, all in favor, Commissioner Markham?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cavanaugh, yes.
Give me a second, well... Need to put them on, um, jump, or on the form machine. Just connect them back, that'd be great.
I'll come back to that.
Well, I think I got this guy to go through this, oh, so...
I didn't think, yeah.
I didn't think so, but probably better than doing it. Somebody way smarter than me has just adjusted, they encouraged.
It's not hard, it's not difficult, it's hard, you know?
Me neither, so, um...
I'd come back, I'd...
So, it'll be, I'm, I'm gonna do it this week, it'll, it'll come next Monday, that'll be next week, it's gotta be next week, so... I didn't, uh, 'cause when I found out, it was Wednesday or Thursday last week, but I needed, it was too late for me to get it done at the time for this meeting, so...
Uh, I could, maybe I could go up to the trailer.
Could, yeah.
I'm bombing.
On the right, I think. We do it.
Had it sold otherwise, huh?
You what?
Had it sold otherwise, huh?
No. Been in and out, traveling around.
Yeah.
Where'd you been? Missed past three meetings.
Eighteen, which one of these?
I was...
Which one of these?
Everyone. Seventy five meetings.
I was at seventy five meeting in, uh, Payne.
Matter of fact.
May?
Not June, so it's one.
And then that coast. I done, I done been down to your heart, but it's next to woods twice since we last... I would have to, to fall tree. First time I drove, first time I couldn't let, first time I walked away there in the gate.
Yeah, when there's kids there, they got a rock.
Second time last week, you know, I tried to make it out, but I didn't, so he made me go back around, I didn't realize. I went through the low road.
Yeah.
I had never been that long.
Oh, really?
There were several thousand people down there, on those ball fields or wherever they are. They had all kinds of buses from everywhere.
Yeah.
That blood stop.
I've been to see things coming. It's funny, see if it comes to check.
When do you want?
Well, I was gone last week.
Did not get off, that's why I'm here, is to check out my shirts. I'll call it.
I've been checking last week.
I want to. See, that's why I'm here, so. That's that personal touch. So he's supposed to kind of look at himself.
Yeah, it's kind of urgent.
Here in light and clear position? Here.
Anywhere? I'll go down there. I'll rate you with. Didn't change.
So.
Yeah.
You better have that wonderful.
Oh, that's what they pick up that straw and stuff. It's part of their.
Now, it was like a last year, we come to her.
And then how it's, where they plant out those.
He is home. Said Saturday was his report today, they came back with a lot of the smiles have hanging more up over there.
Like the third day?
Yeah.
Usually they say the third day.
I did talk to him yesterday, I haven't texted today yet. But he came by last week, that he was, his wife was on. Are this for the two separate buildings?
This is our book, that is our.
No, that is, sorry, this one.
Oh, this is probably your.
That's just my souvenir, that was my ad, but is that for the, because you have to do.
Those are.
Freezing building? Okay, freezing bid, okay, thank you. That's what I'm, I was. Give me a sec.
No.
What? They're stacked.
Oh.
They're all stacked, mostly saw.
I didn't see them.
You saw it, they're all stacked. Gracious.
Have we managed to block out the?
I have, I've just ignored it, because I'm here every day. Just on the progress.
Have you raised kids?
Do what?
Said, have you raised kids?
Well, yeah, but that's been a while back.
Yeah, you learned how to block ten to ten a half or something.
Are they saying how long it's gonna take?
The end of November versus December, so barring any delays or sale. They're moving along pretty good. It's looking pretty good for.
Say. The men's nation's tag lead to a parent, all in favor, Commissioner Markham? Commissioner Cavett, both yes. You gonna get with Chris Cool or the citizens office, find out?
Thanks, Steve.
You can.
Unless anybody's allowing notes to rock. If you don't hear from me, I'll call you.
Okay.
Sure.
And I'm not sure who to make it out to.
Oh, well. Oh. Zach Campbell.
You need my business card here, or I can give you that.
Slash, we didn't.
Yeah.
Can we get part of all that?
I think I can get pretty far on that. I still weren't financed this morning, so.
I'll call Bill.
I've never written handwritten check anything.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, it's a big number.
Was it the color cloud? Oh, yeah.
Uh, we need to love this check for one point, if you told me that, please. For the, from that facility, sorry. Well. Okay, is that, does that account go to name?
Thirteen thirty one.
We can probably just make it out to Pink County Sheriff.
The thirteenth, you have to find them, it's thirteen thirty one, so.
Okay. Well, Lee, Lee's here, she's got the account, so. But, but we can't make it up to the account. So we'll just put the Pink County Sheriff on it, and then maybe in the men law, does the account. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
How long was this last?
Just for the last of the year.
For the next year.
Uh, generally, like, he'll use some of this monthly one year, and then, uh, he'll, he'll provide, well, just kind of general, give him one year, so it's not been every other year.
Has already?
Yeah. For, for the last four years.
One, that's the end. This first time I've ever.
Well, yeah. Uh, it was probably two, maybe three years ago, that month.
Three years ago.
I'll let you write that in your hand, probably through your mind. And, and he said, just make it Pink County Sheriff, and put the account number for the, the county.
My hand, it's not good, but, because I'm, I'll be, Pink County Sheriff.
Yes. Looks great.
Thank you. We'll get it sorted down the road.
All right. You doing all right?
I don't feel very good today.
Yeah, it looked a little off.
Yeah, I'm a little, my stomach's pretty tingly, and trying to get my dog in a better condition, she's got me going home inside of her head, thanks.
Yeah.
Nobody can see her tail.
Snakebite or something, or just?
Uh, it could be, I guess, but I can't get a few, and then I gotta take it down today, so.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
Don't mind.
Still works fine.
Yep, I've got a few of them. Do you have the house member card anymore?
You can only use them if you're going to session, you can't, I would never show them. Usually the highway patrolman would ask you, where do you work? And I never would say, I'm a state lady, I can't stop. I'd say, I work in the state local, and he goes, really, what do you do? It's, I feel bad, because they'll be writing the ticket. I go, well, I'm a member of the house representative. And they just go off. She goes, why didn't you tell me? I did, when you asked, I'm not gonna say, don't give me, I don't think that's right. If I'm breaking the law, everybody used to be held accountable. She didn't ask me that today. I'm working, I'm something, it was the sheriff on the song. Well, I started one, it was instead of, it's okay. She reduced it, where it's below nine miles an hour, it's going twelve miles over. Yeah, they say those thirty mile an hour things.
Way too soon.
In so many weird places. I, I've been, when I first started, I stopped twice, um, on 12th Street. Where it's thirty for two blocks, and then forty. And the Stillwater guy, he just gave me one, and he goes, no problem. The sheriff that stopped me, he was rude. I told David, but he was rude. He goes, he came up to my window, and he goes, okay, and he goes, were you just deciding to ignore those speed limit signs, or did you not see them? And I'm trying to think, how do you answer that?
Yeah.
I, I probably saw him, but I didn't register, is the truth.
Yeah.
And I go, well, I wasn't blatantly annoying him. And I can't say that I, I, I may have seen him, but it didn't register. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And he chewed me out a little bit, and then somebody called him on the radio, and he left, so he didn't give me a ticket, because he goes, I gotta go, slow down. But I'm going, you don't have to be rude. Especially on a traffic stop.
Yeah.
That was probably, I was probably going forty, and then thirty, and it's just ten miles over. Chill. I came in and told David, I said, you need to tell your buddies to be nicer.
Yeah.
They don't, not to not stop me, I don't mind being stopped, I mean, I've stopped all the time.
Yeah.
I do pretty good at getting out tickets, I did this one, and, anyway. That Stillwater, those, that guy that stopped me, he was very nice. He goes, I said, no, I said, I do see them register, but it's slower than faster, I don't know. And he goes, well, let us give you a warning this time, just start watching.
Yeah.
Thought she might do that, since it says I'm from Cushing, but.
Maybe, maybe get a sticker on your card, say Pink County Twitter.
No.
Yeah.
I don't like any special Twitter.
Yeah, I've never done that either.
I mean, if you're the type of officer that likes to give warnings, I'd love a warning. But if you're the type that has to give a ticket, as long as you'll make it written, you'll want my record, I'm happy with that.
If I recall what my grandpa said properly, he was a deputy in Park County.
Oh, was he?
Well, he retired from being a deputy. And he said, I could tell within the first sixty seconds of my conversation with him, if I was gonna give a ticket or not.
Oh, and that's why I usually, I just don't give me today, so I just name my stuff.
Unless it was, like, really, like, if they didn't pull over, you almost say.
I usually set my cruise control down eight miles over, because I do like to speed.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Was it you that was saying, hey, you're great, don't you mind? Yeah. That's pretty good.
Yeah. And so I usually set it for eight over, and then if I get stopped, I know I'm, it's not on my record, but. I was running late today, trying to get my dog seen, trying to feel better, and. I didn't set my cruise, I never set my cruise control on city street.
Yeah, yeah, because thirty miles an hour, who sets their cruise at thirty?
I do wanna go through Edgar.
Okay.
I set my cruise control on Edgar.
Okay.
So that if I should.
Well, Langston, that one's a.
Uh, Langston, yeah, I, I know, since it's now on the highway, and I've been stopped at Langston before. But I just said it eight over on the highway, and they stopped me, but I haven't been stopped by Langston in a long time. I, my car was in the shop or something, I borrowed a friend's car. And I got stopped in her car. And I just wanted, when I got out of the insurance, I just wanted them to know why my license was one thing, and the insurance was in another person's name. I didn't want them to think I sold. I didn't want to think I stole the car.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my thing.
Yeah.
So I gave, I said, this is my friend's car, my car's in the shop. He goes, well, your friend wasn't driving, you were. I didn't imply that, or I didn't want you to think I stole my car.
Yeah, yeah.
I got a funny story about that, when, uh, my son was overseas for, uh, about five years old. And when he got back, my daughter was married, and she got a new car, and he had his old car, and I said, do you care, Will, about your car? And so, now Will was kind of a rebellious teenager.
Yeah.
Or this was younger, in his twenties.
Yeah.
I mean, he was, so he was taking a, he graduated probably his senior class over at Tech. So at lunchtime over at Central Tech, the parking lot is such where everyone's trying to leave, so it's car, 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 it's like that, is what you're supposed to do. Well, Will, um, the car before he went, so he let the car go, so he thought it was his turn. Well, these girls just pulled out in front of him, he flipped them off. So they had a loan to the superintendent. So he got called into the, Madonna and Dear's office. And she said, well, I heard that you did that, he goes, yeah, I'll admit it, I did it, he goes. You're supposed to go everywhere the car, and it was my turn, and they was speeding on too, so yeah, I did it. She goes, well, we're concerned, this is the part, but I about lost my religion over when he told me, he goes. She said, we think you're driving a stolen car. He said, what? He said, your car's registered to a Mr. and Mrs. Craig Cupid in North Carolina. Because that's my sister, she bought a new car, I'm driving her car. I, I'm fine that they called him in for flipping someone off.
Well.
But accusing him of stealing a car. I about lost my religion.
Well, somebody would violate the law because, because no law enforcement is supposed to tell anybody who a car is registered to.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they cannot call a tag number in, like, you or I legally cannot call and say, hey, who owns this vehicle with this tech number? And the sheriff tells us, and we can ask all day long.
Oh, really, now, we should talk to you sooner.
But the sheriff's office or any, any law enforcement is not to convey any information.
I was in the house at the time, so I didn't raise a rapids, because I thought it would be not good.
Yeah.
And, but I did tell, after I got out of the house, I did tell the superintendent at campus. I said, I'm just gonna tell you that, I don't want you to do anything about it.
Was it campus?
No, it was still. I said, I don't want you to do anything about it, it's been five years ago, but I just think you ought to be careful. When you, when you're filming somebody for flipping someone off, which in this day and age is fairly minor, most people take a gun and shoot you. Um, that's fine, I don't mind him being called in and recommended for that, I mean, he should have been, you, you don't have that right. But I said, accusing him of stealing a car out of North Carolina? Is that it?
Yeah.
That's pretty high. You know how we are about our kids.
What, what business is it up there anyway?
Yeah.
But somebody violated the law when they re, like.
So they have campus security, can they do it?
I don't believe, unless they're like a clean, sort of law enforcement officer.
He may.
And even then, he, he is not to report that to the superintendent.
They do. Will comes home, he was mad, he had a little bit of a temper back then, he was really mature as a kid, he was mad, though. Accuse you of stealing that car, she goes, yeah, because it is my daughter's car.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess that's my sister, she bought a new car, and I'm here for a short time, and I drive it home before we sell it.
Yeah, that's.
I didn't know that, that's good to know.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what that. Or else, heck, anybody can call in. Any law enforcement agency could, like, they could give you address, everything.
Yeah, I think it's kind of weird, I mean, I'm okay with it, that anybody can look up anyone's property taxes. It's open records, I'm a little surprised about it.
I think, uh, Jason was saying something about. That. Something not being sent out with. Uh, the taxes. And, uh, because one guy with the house that, he said it just makes a bunch of people mad, as you were saying. The house was built the same year, we're in the same addition, my house right next to his, and he paid his taxes?
Well, but Jason can explain that away, because he explained it to me, I never knew that till I went here. Uh, I go, man, I've never been there. But, so right now, I pay just a few dollars, drove my thousand dollars a year in my house taxes. The house next to me is probably built about the same time, I mean, it looks like it is, but it's on the market now for a quarter of a million dollars, I think. It's not moving right now.
Yeah.
Which I think is a little high, it's, it's not that big, you know, a house, and it's old, and so I'm anxious to see what their taxes are being.
Yeah. Well, when it sells, it, it's completely all to whatever the market rate is.
Yeah, I think I'm just.
Yeah, same here. So if we're gonna have to build a house, we're. Oh, I could, uh, when we looked at the place originally, it was, belonged to the same father, he passed it down to his kids. And then, his, one of his kids gave it to his son. Two different tracks, it was a sixteen acre track and a fourteen acre track. We was looking at buying one of them, I didn't know the other one, wanted to sell, and after he learned that I was buying that one, he said, hey, you wanna buy mine too? Which gave me forty-eight acres, no, twenty-four and a twenty-six.
Yeah.
So, or twenty-two, so, anyway, gave me forty-eight acres.
Almost forty-eight, I think.
And, uh, and I said, well, yeah, yeah, so I talked to my wife, and I said, because we're just gonna buy and then build. And I said, it, it had an old double-wide trailer on it. I said, if we buy all of the land, I said, land is not, if we buy all the land, I can fix this house up, we'll live in it for a few years, then we get the land.